Order, Brainerd City Council, it is February 3rd, 7:30 PM, Council Chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Here.
Bevins. Bevins. Chesak.
Here.
Johnson.
President.
Stunek.
Here.
Jaeger.
Yes.
O'Day.
Here.
Fadell.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I believe, Mr. Johnson, would you like to add something to this agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the agenda with the addition of one item on personal finance, and that's a bond council discussion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, we'll add that direction on bond council discussion as number eight for PNF. Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Against, same sign. We have an agenda. Next, we have the consent calendar, this is a notice to the public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Chesak, second by Bevins, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes. Next, we have item number six, this is public forum, this is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be imposed. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come up and address the council, now is the time. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the council, now is the time. Or if there's anyone online that would like to address the council, please press star three. Looks like there's no one, and we will close the public forum at 7:32. Moving on, we have council committee reports, first, we have personal and finance, and this is Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, we now have eight items on the agenda, the first of which is to consider approval of tech department org chart and job descriptions. This has two motions, the first motion is to approve the technology department job descriptions and classification points as presented, and I so move.
Second.
We're motioned by Johnson, second by Stunek, do we have any discussion?
As you can see in the packet, there are now five positions that will be in the technology department, they were all graded in their points and placed in pay grades, and you can see what the wages will be for these five positions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chesak?
Yes, I guess this has to do with integration of IT, and if both of these items are approved, word, at what point in integration for IT would we be at, would this be all we need, or is there more to come? That's for anybody who cares to answer.
Chris Schubert, would you like to answer that?
Yes, I will, so what we are doing right now is, or the next part would be to approve a MOU with the union, and at that point, after we set wages, then we can start advertising for the positions, we impose for them, then it needs to come back to council again for hiring of internal candidates, and then we would do external, so there are several more steps to go through for the integration.
Okay, so what I heard there is, once we hire all the positions, we will be completed with integration.
For the IT department, yes, or technology department.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else have any questions? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, sorry, to speak again, but I wanted to mention during the council meeting, I've had employees ask why they have to apply for their own jobs within the city, and when I asked that question, Chris Schubert showed me the language in the union contracts that say if we create a new position, it must be posted internally to the union for five days, so since these are new position descriptions, new position titles, our current IT staff outside of Sean, who was just hired, are going to have to apply for one of these four positions within the city to maintain a job with the city.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Johnson, anybody else? Do we have a motion? We already have a motion. If there's no other discussion, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, motion passes. Again, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Pres, we got a second item on this, second motion on this item, and the motion is to direct staff to negotiate the wages for the new technology department positions with the IBEW Administrative Support Union, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins, any discussion? No discussion, hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, motion passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, next up is some distribution of 2024 statewide affordable housing aid funds, and the motion is to, to give $70,000 to Lakes Area Habitat for Humanity from our Saha funds, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, so we advertised for this $96,000, $88,000, but we have 96 a little bit left from last year, or 104 total, I guess, from what we had left from last year. We did get two people to apply for the money, we had Lakes Area Habitat for Humanity and My Neighbor to Love Coalition, we decided in committee to fully fund the Habitat grant, and then just hold on to the remaining $34,000 in change, this money needs to be spent by 2028, so we're in no hurry, so we'll wait and see if a housing need comes up in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any more discussion? Mr. Chesak?
I have a question for Chairman Johnson, do you feel you get a better perhaps return on going directly to Habitat without sharing any of that with Coalition, to My Neighbor to Love Coalition, I believe?
Yeah, thanks. Councilman Chesak, I mentioned this down in committee, Habitat, we've worked with for a long time, it's, it's an organization that's been around for decades, it's a, it's a proven model that gets families into housing, and they've been doing it for generations. My Neighbor to Love Coalition is trying something very unique and could be very positive, but we just don't know, it's not a proven model, I'm not comfortable sending government dollars to an unproven model that could end up not only not putting people in housing, but causing more people to be out of housing, and that, and that, that could be a problem, so I don't think government money should be going to that at this time, until the model can be proven over decades like Habitat.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Against, same sign, motion passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, and this next item is about the country manor development, they requested some delays on fees, and the motion is to approve Country Manor's request to delay payment of sack and whack and deferred assessment for the county manor development project, and further to defer the park dedication funds under the same model, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, do we have any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
So they're not, Country Manor is not asking to get free sack and whack or anything forgiven, they're asking to defer when they pay the fees until after they're operating, after they're in business, and then they'll pay the full fees over the course of five years. We added park dedication funds downstairs because they, I don't think they were aware of them yet, and it's just another city fee that can be put off a few years to help them just get going and get off on the right foot and be as successful as possible in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, any more discussion?
I have a question about the park dedication, when, did you say you added that downstairs? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
So this has been something that we should have been doing all along, but it just got brought up tonight, the park dedication, is that my understanding?
Mr. Johnson?
Well, my understanding, Jeff, is that the country manor developers weren't aware of our park dedication fees, and to save them the time of coming back and asking us to defer them in six months, we'll just take care of it right now, if they're, if they're looking to get as many fees deferred as possible, that's just another one that...
Is there an amount of the, determined on the park dedication?
James estimated about $38,000.
Very much.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bevins?
I spoke against this in committee, and I'm going to speak against it now, I'm in favor of the sack and whack, I think encouraging this type of development and us being able to help, and the park dedication fees, is worthwhile. I, I'm against the absolute zero interest on the assessment on the road, this was a very controversial project back in '06, and since people were allowed to defer eternally, as long as the interest accumulated, that was what the council decided back in '06. Everybody who has paid their assessment, including, as you recall, the one from just recently, had to pay interest through 2012, I believe. So, to tell this one property owner that they don't have to, but everybody else does, all the little people do, isn't fair. It isn't fair to the people who have already paid their assessments plus interest with deferments, and it isn't fair to those that are going to have to do it. The other reason is, these people knew of the assessment, the assessment is the seller. The seller should have paid or cleared or made clear of the assessments from the get-go, to now have to take those assessments and put them on every single other taxpayers so these people can make a few more bucks and everybody else can't, it just isn't fair, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to vote against this, if that, if they were paying the principal plus the 10 years of assessment that we agreed with the last person who did this, I'd be 100% in favor of it, but not, not this deal, it's just too, it's just too much money that's not available to everybody, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. Chesak?
I guess, to Mr. Bevins's point, I got a couple of questions, because I do believe I agree with him on this, and I'm glad he brought it up because it never crossed my mind. When this property, by the developer now, it was purchased, is that a correct statement from somebody recently so they could develop that site? Is that a fair statement, maybe Mr. Cranwick knows that?
It was purchased probably approximately five or six years ago.
Is it not my understanding that when there's assessments on a property, which there would have been on that property five or six years ago, they get paid at the time of purchase?
Not deferred, so there, there could have been a assessment search on it, certainly from a title company, but at the time, when you have deferred assessments or connection charges, they can transfer to the next property owner.
Okay, that's my misunderstanding of deferred assessments, but I, I think Mr. Bevins makes a valid point, because everybody else, again, is got to pay into this. My only misunderstanding was, I thought if they lived there for years and sold, that assessment would have to be paid, but I just learned something, so I would have to agree with Mr. Bevins on that deferred assessment. I'd probably be voting no unless I hear some other information.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak, is there anyone from staff that can tell us the difference between what, what amount that would be in interest?
So the 10 years of interest that they're asking to be waived is $37,347. They are asking though for this to be an interest rate of 1.5%, so it's not quite the whole 37,000 that they're asking, that they won't be paying, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. In this area, having to do with these deferred assessments, has there ever been any project near $50 million that's providing services such as this, or any other type of commercial or economic development besides residential?
I do not believe so.
And the reason why this assessment was not due when the property was sold is because with this project, it was due when the property was replatted or developed. Normally, when someone has deferred assessment against their house and they sell that, that's when it triggers to be due, but with the Beaver Dam assessments, there was a project that it could be transferred as long as the property wasn't replatted or developed, that's what's triggering the assessment to be due on this parcel.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Well, I, I guess I appreciate you opening up here, I, I, we're doing, did I find this correct, we're doing taxi abatement, we're doing, what's the other thing we're doing tonight, or the? Well, sack and, yeah, deferred sack and whack, we have the, what's, what's the other thing we did last?
The park dedication.
Park, well, defer, okay, the...
The bonds.
The bond, what's that called that we did? I forget.
Conduit debt, and we haven't done it yet, it's still coming.
That's next, and again, like Mr. Bevins's point, everybody else has had to pay into this, the little guy, so I, I just, it's kind of, this $37,000, again, I, I guess I didn't know the city was so flush with money we could just waive and give away and not collect all the time, so.
Done, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chesak, Mr. Havigars?
I just want to indicate that they are going to be paying 1.5% interest on some of that money, so I just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
So it's not a complete waive? Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second.
Call a roll call, Mr. Chair?
Let's do a roll call, Tony?
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
No.
Chesak.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes. That motion passes, five to two. And Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, the meeting got really fast after that motion. The next motion is to ratify the hiring of Aaron Forsom as transit operation specialists, and further that he be placed at step two of the transit operation specialist wage grid at 2539 per hour, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek and Bevins.
Where's the top motion?
Yeah.
This, this position was budgeted for, and we've actually had it in the past, it's just, we had it vacant for a while, and we had it in the budget, and now we're filling it.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, motion passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, next up is the, consider the approval of the revised employee policy manual, and the motion is to approve the updated employee policy manual as presented, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, Mr. Johnson?
This is the third packet it's been in, and we finally made it to a personnel and finance committee meeting so it can be acted on, we've all had plenty of time to review it, so I, I hope we all have.
Thank you. Any questions on it? No more discussion?
Can we read the whole thing here tonight?
We're not going to do that. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Against, same sign, motion passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, next up is the annual review and approval of the investment policy, and the motion is to approve the investment policy with the changes, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins, any discussion, Mr. Johnson?
The only changes is that we will be doing our interest allocation on a quarterly basis instead of a semi-annual basis, as was recommended by our municipal advisors.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, that motion passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, the seventh item is consider allowing Peringer to assume four parking spaces, and the motion is to approve Mr. Peringer to assume four leased parking spots previously leased by Bob and Franz in the alley parking lot, so long as Bob and Franz agrees, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Dave came to me quite a while ago on a different issue, but brought this up, that since the city was making him provide four parking stalls for his new apartments he's developing, he's wondering if we could work out some way to get him four stalls that would be right next to the building, in the, in the city-owned parking lot there, and it's just the perfect opportunity right now with Bob and Franz closing, and having four spots, that those could just be assumed by Peringer for his tenants in the apartments he's developing. So we, we approve doing that down in committee with the caveat that, let's check with Bob and Franz first and make sure they're okay giving up their spots, because they may want, they may have some reason to want to keep them, I don't know what it would be, but they are the current lessers of the spot.
Thank you.
Mr. President? These are all paid leases that Bob and Franz were paying us the required amount that the city charges, and it'll just be taken over by Mr. Peringer?
Correct, and then he'll be paying lease rate, too.
Thank you.
I, I guess to further explain, we generally have a waitlist for this parking lot, there is a waitlist with like seven names on it, but I thought since we're making him get four off-street spots, and there is this opportunity with Bob and Franz closing, that would be a good, helpful thing to do for the, the city to help him transfer those spots to him.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, that motion passes. And again, Mr. Johnson?
Hey, thank you, Mr. President, our final item is a discussion on our bond council and economic development matters, and the motion is to continue to be represented by Sophia Lick and Likee in connection with bond and economic development matters, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins, any discussion, Mr. Johnson?
So this was not on the agenda as of last week, but it came up today, that the entire bond council department, if you will, from Kennedy and Graven, left and joined a group called Cutac Rock LLP. So they don't have bond council at Kennedy and Graven currently, they may in the future rehire some, they don't have any right now, so we're in the midst of this conduit debt and some, some bonding and development issues that Sophia has been working on for years that staff recommended, and the committee agreed that we should just stick with the person who's knowledgeable and has all the history on what we're trying to do as a city for now, and if we need to go out for proposals in the future, we'll address that then.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, motion passes.
End of report?
Thank you, next we have Safety and Public Works, Chairman Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, just two items coming out of committee for Safety and Public Works, the first of which is direction on active code enforcement, within that, there's two properties, the first of which is 823 Willow, and a recommendation coming out of committee is to provide an administrative warrant and abate the property and modify the $300 monthly citation to $100 a day, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak, any discussion?
I'd like a little bit more context on this one, so this property, they've received a notice of violation letter and three citations, additionally, there's other issues, off-street parking violation that has been abated, not, they have a non-licensed rental since 2023, and multiple letters and legal action have been undergone by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Any discussion, any other questions? If not, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Against, same sign, motion passes. Mr. Erickson?
All right, the second property is 430 D Street Northeast, and a recommendation coming out of committee is obtaining an administrative warrant to abate the garbage, junk, and debris at 430 D Street Northeast.
The motion?
And I so move, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Jaeger, any discussion on that? Hearing none, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, the last item is a discussion of city-maintained flagpoles, and for this, there's several flagpoles throughout town, one at City Hall, three on the Historic Water Tower, five downtown, and again, several at the parks, brought to our attention that several of the flags were not at half-mast during the latest recommendation to have the flags at half-mast, and motion coming out of committee is to continue to, we, well, to take down the flagpoles during the winter in the parks, also on the water tower, but leave up the flagpole at City Hall, and leave up one of the ones downtown with lighting, as well as go out for bids for flagpoles that are equipped to have them at half-mast and lighting, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak, any other discussion?
I'll just add, too, that staff was going to put together a little diagram or map of, of those locations for us to...
And they'll have the recommendation of the one flagpole that we keep at full mass operational during the actual winter months.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Does this include like the fire department, police department poles and all that? No, those are city poles, too. However, but they actually...
We don't have the operational capability of lowering a flag here?
What's that?
No, we do.
We do, it's just that we need a lift, for the ones that are downtown, we need a lift to lower and raise them, because the, they're, they're not accessible for, you know, when you're on the ground, there are some designs with a flagpole with just a key slot, and they're nicer, they're a little bit more expensive, but you don't have to rent a lift to remove those flags or at half-mast or full mass. Great, thank you.
Mr. Erickson, good? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to add that the park board did discuss this at their last meeting for the parks.
And they were in agreement?
For the ones within the parks, yes.
Thank you. Anything else? In other words, we have a motion and a second, let's go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign, motion passes. Mr. Erickson?
End of report.
Thank you. Next, we are moving on to unfinished business, 8A is a call for applicants, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is, the following applications are available on our website, charter commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026, housing redevelopment authority, one term expiring 2027, library board, one term expiring 2027, transportation advisory committee, two terms expiring 2025, one term expiring 2026, and that's it, look at us.
Thank you, and for council president, I have one term expiring 2027 for the airport commission, and two terms expiring 2027 for the planning commission. Next, we have 8B, this is a final reading of proposed ordinance 1580 amending section 600 of the city code, and this is for Finance Director Connie Hillman.
Thank you, Chair, so this was getting rid of the surety bond requirement for the garbage haulers, we copied the same language from the contractor's license, and we also updated the, where the, the reference to where the fees are included in the code. At the last council meeting, council elected not to hold a public hearing for this ordinance, so tonight's recommended action is to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading of proposed ordinance 1580 and ordinance amending section 600 of the city code, and note that a vote to dispense with the reading must be unanimous, and then consider adoption of proposed ordinance 1580.
Thank you, Connie, do we have any discussion? If not, we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading of the proposed ordinance 1580.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins, any discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Against, same sign, that motion passes. Next, we're looking for a motion to consider adoption of the proposed ordinance 1580.
So move, Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins, any discussion? Hearing none, go to a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Mr. President?
Against, same sign. Oh, we've got to do a roll call again. Let's go ahead and do that, then, go ahead, Tony.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes, that motion passes. Moving on to new business, 9A, we have a consideration from Public Utilities Commission requesting to add conference attendance requirements to the commission description, I believe this is Public Utilities Director Chris Evans, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Public Utilities Commission recommended unanimously at their November 26th meeting that an expectation for commissioners to attend at least two state events and one national event during their five-year term to be added to the Public Utility Commissioner description.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against this, I'm looking at the word expectation, and for all intents and purposes... uh, for all intents and purposes, this is a volunteer position for the most part. There is a, there is pay, and, uh, there is a, an actual, um, tabled, I believe, a motion or held off to, uh, ask the council to actually remove them from the city's insurance. And that, uh, there was this one member that had a, a issue, otherwise I think that would have passed and we would have probably had that before us. But this expectation, I, I look at it this way. If, uh, if anybody applies to do a job planning and zoning park board, and we, we all get our packets, you know, it's like, uh, uh, for those meetings as well, and you, you say, oh, I expect you to read it. Well, yeah, it kinda goes without saying. And you, you, you can't make anybody do that, but you would expect them to. Uh, this is a little different. Uh, some people may have a job, they can't just take off. Maybe this is on a weekend, but that's still their time. And, and I, and I listened to this, and it seemed like it was one of those things that had virtually no discussion. It was a long meeting, it was getting late, you might say, and just say, yeah, what the heck, let's just, you know. And, and who's gonna hold them accountable to doing this? Who's gonna keep track? And then what happens then if there's a, um, what's the consequence that if you don't, uh, they don't get reappointed for five years? Is that what's gonna happen? If, you know, if you've done a good job and people have businesses and that type of thing, they can't always get off the time. And, oh, we're gonna expect you to go. So I would be knowing this if there's a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Chesok. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I kinda had questions along the same lines, like what's, what's the teeth here? What, what if somebody, my understanding is public utility commissioners are appointed by the mayor, approved by the council for five-year terms? So if they set an expectation of you must attend three events, well, whose expectation is that? Are, are they going to be removed from the commission if they don't attend the conferences? Or do they still just serve out their five year? Like, I don't understand the point of, I don't understand the point of it. Right? Are they going to be removed from the commission, Chris?
Mr. Evans?
Uh, I guess the, I guess the commission would look for a mechanism for that, but the, the thought process was primarily focusing on having commissioners go to these events because of all the legislation and regulatory things that are happening, just so they can be aware and meet with the decision makers and just help the city have a presence at these key decision locations or meetings. And that, uh, obviously, the more people that we have boots on the ground in addition to lobbyists, et cetera, that, you know, we can, uh, plead our cases to the powers that be at the state and national level to, you know, aid with funding and, uh, provide information that can be disseminated to our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
So no, no teeth, nobody's getting kicked off the commission, so the, so it's, it's pointless to have. I, I don't disagree with anything you said, Mr. Evans, and I think that, I, I would hope all of our commissioners are engaged in going to conferences and lobbying our representatives and whatnot. But I think it's pretty simple enough to have the mayor appoint and council approve, and the commission just does its thing. So I think I'll be voting no on requiring attendance of conferences.
There's a difference, I think, in the wording. It says expectation, not quite a requirement. Um, but, uh, Mr. Jaeger, I know you had something you wanted to add.
That question was most, was mostly answered, but I'm wondering if there's a softer way to incentivize this somehow, that, uh, that Mr. Evans might be able to, uh, mine craft over, um, a period of time to come back to, instead of requiring it to maybe incentivize some of these, some of these.
Somewhere on the, maybe the language of encouraged. Um, I, I do think, I, I think, personal development and education on matters that you're dealing with are definitely important. I think it would be great if we had more, um, involvement in this type of thing, not, not only at the PUC level, but at the council level as well. Um, and that's something we can talk about more going into the future, but, um, yeah, I, I can see where the expectation of commissioners to attend at least two events, state events and one national event during a five-year term. The other thing that comes up in my mind is, what, you're gonna do them all in year four? Well, that's not gonna help much either. So maybe we encourage commissioners to attend in their first year, or maybe the chair each year goes along with the Public Utilities Director to an event, somewhere along those lines where we just start off with in, increasing that involvement, uh, more than what we do right now. But I'm, uh, I would be in favor of it, I guess, if the language were changed a little bit, but the motion that's on right now is the motion I believe that's on the memo.
There's no motion yet.
Do we not have a motion yet? Okay.
I, I got one more comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chesok.
I, I expect every one of us to go to a couple League of Minnesota Cities conferences and, uh, maybe Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities too, but, uh, um, the city will pay for it, you know, why not? And any commissioner out there can go to these at their, whenever they come up, there's, uh, they, I believe we have, uh, development funds or whatever we call it here to, uh, pay for their travel and, uh, expenses. And so it's always there. It's up to the individual. Like I said, uh, this is, uh, you know, none of us are told what to do here. Um, and I just, I, I don't know, I don't think it was given a full, full, uh, full thought process at the actual meeting when I listened to the, the agenda items, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Mr. Stunek?
I would just say let's direct staff to come back with a cleaner option, so it's more black and white, because it seems really gray and vague right now.
Stunek? Mr. Mayor?
Has there been any lack of involvement in these or an excessive amount of these? Are, are people beating down the door to go to them, or?
Well, again, I think, uh, the, the, the driving force is that there's a lot of things happening in the legislative and regulatory, uh, arenas now, uh, more than ever. And that, again, this was just a mechanism to make sure that, you know, more people and more in-person events were being attended and that the city was being represented.
Okay. Are, are they showing a, a concern for it, though? I mean, it's unanimous, but was there, is there a concern that not enough of it is being attended?
Uh, yeah, this was, uh, this was, uh, commission's recommendation and directive.
For themselves, yeah. I'm just wondering where it came from. Because unanimously, they unanimously recommended-
That's gonna be my question.
Yeah, so I just wondering where it came from. If they all unanimously believe that they should be doing this. I don't know, it just seems, it seems a little odd, but I don't, I, I don't, uh, disagree that we absolutely should be doing those things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Anybody wanna try to take a hack at this one?
I'll make a motion to deny the recommendation.
Second, Johnson?
A motion by Chesok and a second by Johnson to deny this recommendation. Are we leaving it at that? Do we wanna see this again?
That's up to the Public Utilities-
I think, I was gonna say the same thing, if they wanna come back with something else. Uh, Mr. Jaeger?
The per, the, the current Public Utilities Commission voted unanimously for themselves to attend this. It seems like we got the right group of people there, and they can self-police this, at least in the short term.
Yeah. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bevins?
I'm, just a question, a clarification on what, something Mr. Chesok mentioned. It, it doesn't say anything about funding on this, but there is personal development, I know, in the city budget. Is there in the, in the, um-
Public Utilities?
Public Utilities budget?
Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes, we do have travel, uh, uh, money available for events and training and development.
For appointed people, not staff?
Well, it, it, it's all lumped together, so.
Oh. Okay. I just, no, that's not the case with the city. It's separate, because the union contracts are different than the contracts we have.
Sure. All right. Anything else? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I'll just add one final thing. I, I, I support the motion. Sorry to belabor the point, but I know Bill Ruley was on the Public Utility Commission for a very long time, and he was involved with national organizations, he was involved with state organizations for energy and electrical utilities. And it's not like the, the funding mechanisms are there, and if the commissioners have the interest, they can go do this as evidenced by the commission members who have gone and done this. So I, I, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Hearing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion passes. Next, we're moving on to 9B. It's a public hearing and adoption of the resolution ordering improvement and ordering preparation of the plans for Improvement 2316 South Brainerd Resurfacing Project. And this is, I believe, uh, Mr. Habikars.
Thank you, Mr. President. This here project, you've already voted on this twice. Uh, this is on step three of step five, and we have representatives from Bolton and Mink to give us a quick presentation on this. Thank you.
Thank you. So you could say, name an organization before you get started, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Brian Drown, I'm a project manager with Bolton and Mink.
Thank you.
So, uh, yeah, tonight we have the, uh, improvement hearing for, uh, the South Brainerd, uh, improvement project. Uh, we'll just go over, uh, quickly, uh, the presentation that was in your packet, uh, go over the scope, the improvements, how that, um, applies to the, uh, city's assessment policy, the estimated cost from the, uh, feasibility study, uh, and then just, uh, where we're at in that, uh, 429 process. And then this is a public, uh, hearing, uh, to have an opportunity to take public input. Uh, so where we're at, just quickly, um, the feasibility report was accepted on January 6th. Um, so tonight, here, we're having the improvement hearing, and then with the, uh, consideration of the resolution to order the project and, uh, prepare, uh, plans and specifications. Um, if that moves ahead, uh, we plan to be back, uh, with those plans, uh, in a couple weeks, uh, to get authorization, uh, to move to bidding. Uh, that takes about a month in March, um, and then be back, uh, to, to you to, um, have an, a, a contract, uh, award recommendation, um, looking for project construction at the beginning of the, of the summer, um, and hope to be wrapped up, I would think, by July 4th, and then, um, have the final assessment hearing, uh, following the completion of construction. Uh, the project area is in the, uh, southwest portion of the city, uh, basically residential streets, um, north of Buffalo Hills Lane, um, and, uh, including Graydon Avenue, uh, that being the eastern, uh, boundary. So those, kind of, those streets, north of Buffalo Hills and west of, uh, Graydon. Um, also, um, in that, uh, project area, uh, BPU has requested there's 10, um, fire hydrants, uh, to be, um, replaced and, um, gate valves added on the hydrant lead such that they can be, uh, serviced and, um, uh, shut off without affecting the whole, whole system. Uh, so the proposed, uh, improvements, uh, for the street portion, uh, Graydon Avenue, uh, that has a little thicker section than the other streets, so that will include, uh, milling off the top two inches of the existing pavement, um, just between the curbs, and then, uh, paving that with, uh, uh, new pavement. Uh, the rest of the streets have a slightly, uh, uh, thinner, uh, pavement section such that they're not a, a candidate to be, uh, milled and overlaid. And so actually just removing that, uh, entire, uh, top layer, it has one, uh, lift of pavement, compacting the existing, uh, base material, uh, and then placing, uh, uh, new bituminous pavement, uh, throughout the project. Uh, identified a few areas of concrete curb and gutter that need spot repair, uh, and as well as, uh, two, uh, some storm sewer castings on the north end of, uh, Carroll Lane and the cul-de-sac. And then, uh, with the cul-de-sac roads off, uh, Ridge, uh, Avenue, uh, maybe some concrete valley gutters just to improve, uh, drainage, uh, in those intersections. And then the 10, um, fire hydrants and gate valves that was mentioned. Uh, looking at the, uh, city assessment policy, um, we are, uh, following Minnesota statute 429. Uh, the city policy would have, uh, assessing, uh, 50% of the project costs, um, to the, to the benefiting properties, uh, on a front-foot basis, with that, uh, repairment either being, uh, as a property owner could do that in full or, uh, assessed, uh, over a 10-year period, uh, to the property at an interest rate yet to be, uh, determined. Uh, so this is kind of the project area, a couple exhibits, um, out of the feasibility study. So each property, the front footage, um, was, uh, labeled and, and calculated, um, that being the ridge area, and then this, the eastern, um, portion of the, the, uh, the project. Uh, so all these, each property, um, their front footage, um, assigned, um, and then added, add all, added all up, and I'll get to that in a couple minutes with those calculations. Um, here's the estimated project costs. Um, we have two, two columns, uh, the one in green, that's the, uh, resurfacing and street, uh, items. Um, and then in blue, uh, has the, uh, construction items that would be associated with, uh, removal and replacement of, of the hydrants. Uh, right now, the estimated cost for the resurfacing portion is $575,470, and the hydrant replacements $234,101, uh, for a total of $809,575, which at this point, with these being estimates, does include a 10% contingency. So those are, those numbers, uh, broken down for this project. Um, the, uh, costs associated with the hydrant replacements would not be, uh, assessed, just the, uh, improvements, uh, with the, uh, street resurfacing. Uh, so, uh, 50% of that $575,470, uh, comes up with an amount of $287,735, um, to be assessed. Um, adding up all that front footage and, and, uh, there's a total of $17,363 or 363 feet on the project. And so, uh, that, dividing that total footage, um, into that assessable amount, uh, comes up with a front footage of, uh, $16.57 cents per, per foot. Uh, the assessment policy does have a, a side yard, uh, portion that the city, uh, takes, um, and, uh, provides for 50% of that for corner lots, with the corner lot being the short side, um, being your front footage, and the long side of a, a corner lot being your side footage. And so, um, these have all been calculated with these rates. Um, if a particular property owner, um, I don't have it as a, uh, as a slide tonight, but in the feasibility study, there's a preliminary role that each property owner, based on these rates and what is considered side footage and front footage, could look and see what their estimated assessment is, um, at this point, again, um, an assessment, or an estimate. So, again, uh, that's kind of the estimated costs and the methodology of, of what the, how the rates were accepted or, uh, determined. So, um, yeah, tonight, we're here again at the improvement hearing with the estimated costs and a chance for, for input with the next step, um, being that to order the project and the preparation of plans, which is also on the agenda tonight.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesok?
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, did I see correctly, mobilization for this was like over $500,000, like $530 something?
Uh, 35,000.
35,000, okay, so, I don't know how I got that. So it's five, or three, 35,000, that's the cost of the contractor to mobilize their equipment, right? That's what you estimate?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, when you estimate that cost, doesn't that depend on where the contractor comes from? I mean-
Yeah, and this is in line. We, um, you know, we administer, uh, projects similar to this, and generally, it's, uh, about in that 5%. Um, with this, uh, being, um, not multiple, a ton of contractors probably, uh, expected for this project, we're, we're just under that 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Brian. Um, I feel, I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of the pavement needs, but what I have a, less of a grasp on is the hydrants. And I don't know if, maybe this is a question for you or for staff, but the current hydrants, are they not- And I don't know if, maybe this is a question for you or for staff, but the current hydrants, are they not equipped with the gate valves? Are they deficient? Can you talk a little bit about the hydrant needs? Or if, yeah, I can direct that towards staff.
Yeah, I can clarify that. So the 10 hydrants that are out there, they are original to the neighborhood, so they are pretty dated, and they are ones that do not have gate valves on them. So like Brian mentioned, to do any service on those, those do require us to shut down the main. So that is a water outage for those folks that are connected to that segment of main, to be able to service those fire hydrants. So this replacement would obviously replace the ones that are original to the neighborhood, but also install gate valves that we could service those hydrants in the future without having to affect the main and put people on a water outage.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jaeger?
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I just have a couple of quick questions. The, procedurally, when you guys establish unit pricing, is that based on 2024 historical data, or is that 2025 futures?
It probably mainly based on 2024 with a little inflationary in our estimates for 2024.
What is that inflationary number?
Generally, we're assuming about 4%.
Okay. And a second question is, part of the scope of work is turf establishment? That's a very broadly described work. Can you explain, is that hydro seeding, hoping that, hoping that nature waters this? Is that relying on us to self-perform the watering, no watering? Can you just talk through the turf establishment, please?
So yeah, that would be anything beyond the curb and gutter that is disturbed by construction. Generally, I'll be honest, this is my first project with the city of Brainerd. Generally, you know, we will specify that in the plans and specs. I'm guessing seeding and hydro seeding, there is typically in contracts, a 30-day maintenance period that the contractor needs to water and maintain that.
That was my question, if we were self-performing the watering, or if it was included, so.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Habigors?
I just want to point out, Brian, is this correct in the sense that, so $16.57 per foot? So essentially, within this neighborhood, it's on average of 100-foot frontage, it'd be $1,700?
Yes.
Per, so per family, on average, most of these lots are 95 feet to over 120 and stuff. So on the average, it's 100-foot frontage, so that would be about $1,700 per household, on average, again.
Thank you, Mr. Habigors. Anything else, Mr. Drowne?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're looking to hold a, we're looking to hold a public hearing. Do we need a motion for this? Nope, just open it. All right. So it is 8:23, and we will now open the public hearing. So if there's anybody here that wishes to address the council, please do so now. Name and address.
John Forrest, 159 Pineview Drive. And I missed the original hearing on this. I was out of state celebrating the birth of probably the world's best-looking granddaughter. So, but some of these questions could have been answered there. But, so I got back and I started picking things up, and I started looking at the street assessment project, and I started to have some questions. And one, and I think the city has wrestled with this issue in the past, is about assessments on a cul-de-sac. Now, I live on Pineview Drive, and Pineview Drive is kind of a lazy comma. Instead of a round cul-de-sac, it's kind of a comma, so it's kind of flat on the top, and then it kind of bulges down at the bottom. Well, I'm down at the bottom where it bulges. So I have four pieces of property that are, I don't know if, can you see? I have a pointer here that I can point out where we're talking about, my pointer. Oh, it doesn't work on the screen, does it? So I'm at 159 Pineview, and I think I'm the next lot over from what's highlighted there. As you notice, those lots around me are very large lots, and they haven't hit my lot yet, but they're.
Go east.
I'm over to the east there. There it is. So you can see, by comparison, my lot is really very small. Those are very large lots around me. Now, there are four houses that are served off of that cul-de-sac. Three of them have their driveways off that cul-de-sac. I don't. Mine is up the way off of Pineview Drive. Because of the lazy comma effect of the cul-de-sac, like my neighbor immediately to the left there, he's got about 70 feet of frontage on the cul-de-sac. And his neighbor has about 70 feet, maybe 75 feet. So using a $16.50 number, their assessments are on $1,100, $1,200, or something like that. Now, because I have all that frontage on the cul-de-sac, plus running down Pineview Drive, even though my lot is very small, I've got almost 194 feet that I'm going to be assessed on. So I'm looking at $3,200, $3,300. So we got four houses being served, and we have assessments, some as low as $1,100, and I'm looking at an assessment of about $3,200, $3,300. So I think there's a little bit of question of equity here, and I'm wondering, you know, if the city has a cul-de-sac policy, because I think this issue has been wrestled over the years, about how do you really fairly assess on a cul-de-sac? And if not, would that be a side lot category? Where I would be maybe assessed on, let's say, the part on front on Pineview Drive as a regular assessment, and maybe the part on the cul-de-sac would be the side lot or something. But it just, you know, it just got me asking some questions, so I thought I'd use the opportunity to come to city council tonight and just put the issue out and just see if there's any thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Yeah, I don't know if we're going to be able to answer your question on that exactly tonight, but that's, you kind of answered it the way I would have answered it, considering one side, a side lot, which would be less of an assessment. But have you spoken with staff about any of this?
No, this kind of, I just got back and I just started looking at it, so I really just kind of discovered it this afternoon. So I know I haven't, so. And I thought that the city might have a cul-de-sac policy that I wasn't aware of, and that, I guess, that's part of my question. Does the city have a cul-de-sac policy for assessment?
I would encourage.
I think it's been on, I think the city council has wrestled with this.
Yeah, I don't remember coming up when I've been on here, but I would encourage you to reach out to Mr. Habigors, either after the meeting or early in the morning tomorrow. I think he'll be able to help you out with the answers to some of these questions that you have.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak.
Typically don't, in a public hearing, we don't usually engage, but my question would be, I guess, due to my limitations here, is any portion of the property Mr. Forrest has, is it, could you plat it or develop portions outside of what he currently lives on? Could it be?
I would doubt it. I, it's pretty, it's a pretty small lot, and the house, obviously, doing the house and garage, it fills up a whole lot of it.
That's what I figured, so, okay, thank you.
You bet. Mr. Johnson?
All right, two things. One, can we put the, our assessment policy on the SP&amp;W for next meeting, just so they can review it and see if we have a cul-de-sac provision, or if maybe we should?
It's a good idea.
And then, secondly, this is the, this is the public hearing to say whether we should or shouldn't do the project. The assessment, public hearing will be in August after we have all of the actual costs known.
Excellent.
Okay, and then maybe I would just suggest that maybe the city would have a discussion as to having an assessment on a cul-de-sac discussion.
Yep, we're going to have Safety and Public Works take a look at that and see what we have for a policy currently, and if we want to install one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Anyone else want to address the council? Please do so now. If not, is there anyone online that would like to address the council? If so, press star three. Anyone online want to address the council, please, please press star three. Doesn't look like we have anyone else that wants to address the council, so we will close the public hearing at 8:30 PM. Next, we're looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution in which orders the improvement and preparation of the plans.
So move, Erickson.
Second.
We have a motion by Erickson, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Tony, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger? O'Day?
Yes. That motion passes. All right. Next, we are in 9C. This is consideration of amendment to planned unit development for Country Manor Development Project. I believe this is Community Development Director James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Country Manor is proposing to amend the PUD by expanding the Southwest Memory Care Building to accommodate additional memory care units, removing a portion of the main parking lot, reducing the size of the Northwest Building, and removing a detached garage. As explained by the applicant, these are all items that can be added at a later date if needed. The senior living facility as proposed would be comprised of 44 senior living apartments, 32 luxury apartments, 30 memory care units, and an attached childcare facility for eight infants, 14 toddlers, 40 preschoolers, and 30 school-aged children, and for rehabilitation services for residents and the public. The original PUD included 92 apartments and 18 memory care units. The planning commission considered this request at their January meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the PUD amendment, subject to the findings of fact and contingent upon approval of the development agreement. And just to note, the development agreement will be brought before city council at the next meeting. I can certainly answer any questions, and representatives from Country Manor are also here.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Anybody have questions for staff? Doesn't look like it. We're looking for a motion to approve the PUD amendment, subject to the findings of fact with the following conditions, approval of the development agreement. Motion by Bevins, second by Stunek. Any discussion?
Got the name right.
Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. All right, next, we're moving on to 9D. This is to conduct a public hearing on tax abatement for Country Manor Brainerd Campus LLC and adopt a resolution granting a property tax abatement for certain property in the city and approving a tax abatement agreement with Country Manor Brainerd Campus LLC. Again, Community Development Director, James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start this off here. So the EDA considered this request and recommended a structured abatement with 100% abatement in the first three years of operation, as the facility is most vulnerable during this time. Also, the county did provide new taxable values to the property as directed by the EDA for city council consideration. Michaela from Baker Tilly will go into greater detail regarding the numbers on the tax abatement. So with that, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and number two, to adopt a proposed resolution granting a property tax abatement on abatement property and approving a tax abatement agreement with Country Manor Brainerd Campus LLC. So I'll turn it over first to Michaela. Sophia is also here to answer questions on the abatement, and afterwards, I can certainly answer any questions as well.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. To add on to what James had described, this, the Country Manor did come before the city requesting an increase in their tax abatement assistance from what was considered a year ago. Their request is for up to 20 years of tax abatement assistance, or 1.2 million, whichever would reach first. The total estimated taxable value based on additional analysis by the county is about 18.8 million, and that does include a breakdown between the unit types of the standard apartment, the standard housing units, the luxury housing units, and then the daycare retail portion of the project. The structure of the tax abatement, which again is based on the increased taxes generated by the city share over the maximum 20-year term, with the blended approach of 100% for years one through three, which would equate to, based on that 18.8 million of taxable value and the city's proposed 2025 tax rate of 53.975%. So years one through three is estimated to be about $128,927. And then years four through 17 at 65% would be based on these same value and tax rate estimates of $83,802. And then the final three years at 35% would be about $45,124. So based on this over maximum 20-year term, the current value assumptions of 18.8 million and the proposed paid 25 city share tax rate, that total tax abatement would be, projected to be 1.695 million, and would be more than what the maximum amount pursuant to the terms of the agreement are. And so we're projecting that even though the term can go up to 20 years, based on the staggered percent blended 65%, the abatement would, or is projected to be done in closer to 13 years, again, based on those assumptions. The project is pursuant to the terms of the agreement, expected to start construction in 2025, and will be done by December 31st of 2026, and therefore, that new taxable value of 18.8 million would be realized for taxes payable in 2028. That's a brief overview of the tax increment numbers, the term of the abatement, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have on tax abatement or on the abatement analysis or additional discussion.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Is there anything else? Anything else from the, our attorneys online?
That's it from my perspective.
Okay, thank you, if we don't have any.
Nothing from me, including.
That's why we kept her on.
Okay, all right. So if there's no questions from council, we're looking to open the public hearing to consider granting property tax abatement under Minnesota statutes, sections 469.1812 through 469.1815 for 65% of the city's share of property taxes for the abatement property. And we will now open the public hearing. It is 8:37 PM. So if there's anybody here that wants to address the council, please do so now. Doesn't look like there's anybody in here that wants to address the council, but if there's anyone online, please press star three. I'll ask again, if there's anyone that wants to address the council, please do so now. We'll now close the public hearing. So next, we're looking to adopt the proposed resolution granting a property tax abatement on the abatement property and approving a tax abatement agreement with the Foundation for Healthcare Continuums.
Go. Second.
Motion by Jaeger?
Nope.
Chesak? Second by Bevins?
Johnson.
Johnson.
By Johnson?
Stunek, whatever.
One at a time, one at a time.
Right.
We got a third and a fourth over here, too.
Yeah, we're all ready.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's go to a vote. Is this a resolution, Tony?
Yes.
All right, let's do it. Call the roll.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. And that resolution passes. All right, moving on to number 10, we have staff reports. Tony Gage? Chief Holmes? Chief Davis? Mr. IT, Sean Strong?
Nothing to add.
Connie Hillman, Finance?
Yes, tonight, I handed out the related party questionnaire needed for the audit. There is a front and a back, so if you could sign that and return it to me, that would be great.
Thank you, Connie. Mr. Habigors, Public Works?
Yes, just a few items. Next meeting, well, you'll have a lot on our transit program. And then also, just coming up this Saturday, we're going to be having a skating party at Memorial Park. And Kayla, our recreation specialist, did a great job. She got a lot of good sponsors, new sponsors this year, so hoping everyone can make it out there. It'll be starting at 1 o'clock on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Habigors. James Kramvik, Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Block Metrics has asked for a special meeting from the EDA as there were a few minor changes to the overall building and site plan as part of the final design package. The EDA will need to consider an amendment to the purchase and development agreement. High Tech will attend the meeting and is very close to submitting the building permits for. for this project. Uh, also Paradigm Auto has submitted their land use application and is within the ninety-day requirement from city council, they are proposing, uh, pavement option for their, uh, property. And that's everything.
Thank you, Mr. Cranwick, and I apologize, our city attorney.
Just to let the record reflect, it's Christian Schaefer here for, uh, Ratwick instead of Joe Ankle today, but, other than that, Joe didn't send me anything, so no, we're good.
Thank you. Chris Schubert, HR?
Nothing to add.
Chris Evans, Public Utilities?
Nothing to add, thank you.
All right. Mr. Sharpen here, if your computer is working?
Yes, Mr. President, I think you can hear me, I do not have any...
We can hear you this time.
Happy that you can hear me and will look forward to chatting soon.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpen here. City Administrator Broyles?
Just one quick note, I did attend a downtown business event last week at Chicken Rice, um, enjoyed some great food, I think, uh, we were, uh, we were, we, we had some trial taste of some new menu items, which were amazing, so, no, good food, good people, and just, uh, it's always good to see these downtown businesses doing well and thriving, so...
Absolutely. Thank you. Next, we have the Honorable Mayor, Dave Bedell.
Well, Nick, I was going to say the same thing, so I appreciate you mentioning that, uh, thank you to those business owners that, that attended, and thank you to, uh, Chicken Rice for the delicious food, great place, go check it out, chicken sandwich, best you'll ever have.
Best ever.
Best you'll ever have. Uh, secondly, ladies and gentlemen, you are witnessing before your eyes, Mike O'Day is learning, folks. The gavel game is still strong, but the resolutions are just coming around, and I really appreciate that, Mike. Uh, but lastly, the, I just want to share, the park board has already begun its process for looking at the budget for this year. Ladies and gentlemen, it is, what, February, what is it, the fifth today? The thir, oh, excuse me, the third, February the third, the park board is already looking at their budget, and I just want to thank them for doing so and getting ahead of the game, and I will also extend that to all departments of the city, it's never too early to start looking at your budgets, so join in, the park board in doing so, so, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to council reports, Mr. Stunick?
I have nothing.
Johnson.
Johnson?
No.
Hey, no?
No.
Uh, let's go to Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I got one thing, um, there was a, um, a, a lady that lived over in southeast Brainerd that, uh, happened to get my phone number from somebody from Public Utilities, and she had a concern about the chlorine smell and taste in her water, and, um, every one of us, I think, are sensitive to different things, and I actually went over to her home and smelled the water, and it was no different than what I drank, and I, she talked about the utility staff helping her, talking to her, trying to figure out a way, and they gave her a suggestion, and, uh, she called me the other day, this has been a few weeks ago this all started, and, uh, she said she actually would boil her potatoes and they smelled like chlorine, and she was just buying water from the grocery store and spending all this money, she didn't like it at all, well, they suggested that they take the water from your tap and put it in a container and leave it set uncovered, and she did that for like two days, had it in her fridge and put it through a filter, and she can't have, she has no problem anymore with chlorine flavor or smell, and I thought it was a remarkable story, she couldn't thank the BPU staff enough for helping her and giving her ideas, so, good story.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I also attended Chicken Rice for the, uh, Business Social last Wednesday, and it was delicious, my first time there, the Northside residents met last Thursday at the center to discuss an upcoming big building project on the Northside with details to come in the future, and I attended my very first library board meeting. Understand if you're jealous, it was interesting, and one thing cool that's going to happen is they are entering into an agreement with a company that's going to digitize all of the old Brainerd dispatches, and if you've ever had to go over to the library and spend days on microfiche trying to find something, there's no way to search on microfiche, you have a date, and that's all you can do. This will allow you to search like any other computer program, dispatches back as far as we have, which is a long time, so it's kind of cool. So exciting news happening at the library every day, I recommend you go, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins, Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, real quickly, uh, following robust, uh, conversation, the HRA eagerly will be having their meetings, uh, here in, uh, in these, uh, beautiful surroundings, uh, under the promise that, uh, Mr. Boils will be providing coffee, so, uh, he did, uh, step up to the plate there and, uh, and, and brought that forward, I would also, secondly, like to just say, we've been working on this Country Manor thing for quite some time with several different departments, and, um, just, uh, it's exciting to be getting close to possibly seeing that happen, and, and I'd like to re, extend my appreciation to, uh, Country Manor for wanting to build a facility like this in Brainerd, and, uh, we're happy, I'm, for myself, uh, certainly happy and, uh, excited about the work that we've done there, and fa, last thing, there is a fantastic, uh, hockey rink built in a yard on Fourth Street with lights, nets, uh, backdrop, if you want to see something cool, just go check it out, it won't be there much longer, but, uh, I, I, it's a cool thing, so go check it out, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Chairman Johnson?
I'm, uh, I'm a little upset with, uh, Kevin Jaeger's dress code here. I think he's overdressing, I think he's making us all look bad, Devin?
Is that a motion?
You are wearing a hat.
Next time, is that a motion?
Maybe he's got shorts on, he's covered.
That's all I have, thank you.
That came from a guy wearing a hat.
I think some of us, it doesn't take much to make us look bad.
I just wanted to thank staff, uh, being a new-again member, uh, they've been really generous with their time, uh, answering my questions and getting me back up to speed, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to do a shout-out for everybody that, uh, came to town or went out to Gull Lake from town this past weekend and stood out in a blizzard for three to five hours or whatever it was, um, sounds like some fish were caught, prizes were won, it was a major success, I heard this morning on the radio, it was record attendance, that's probably because they were all told it was going to be nice out. But I unfortunately did not make it, um, I too want to extend gratitude and welcome to the Country Manor group here, um, looking forward to that project getting underway, and, uh, big things in twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, everybody, now we're just looking for, uh...
So move.
Motion to adjourn?
God, I'm sorry.
Motion by Bevins?
No, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Johnson.